Okay, we are recessing to close. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Public announcement of closed session action items taken. Concerning Agenda Item C1, today the Board voted seven to zero to initiate litigation against responsible defendants, including Southern California Edison, to recover damages resulting from the Eaton fire. Thank you. A adjournment of closed session. We will call to order at 7:50. Atama?
Here.
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 Presente.
Here.
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 And our student board members not here yet? Oh, okay, that's right, special meeting. Who would like to do the pledge, please? Tina Fredericks? Thank you. Now, we'd like to go to Item G, public comment.
The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of public comments via email and will be part of the permanent record of this meeting. I'll be calling you in groups of three, and you can come to the lectern. The light should be green. Frances, no, sorry, sorry. Amy Gonzalez, Consuelo Martinez, Saud Rothman. Three minutes each because we have.
Hi, my name's Amy Gonzalez. I'm a parent at Washington STEM, and I've seen you a couple of times, hello. And I wanted to talk about the budget cuts for the teacher. I work really hard as a parent. I'm one of those parents who really wants to see Washington thrive, and I do a lot of it to help out the community for my child, for everybody. And, you know, it's really sad because we do have a lot of teachers that really make a difference in our school. And I think it was Ms. Marshall who asked a question one day when I was here, and she said, "How can we bring people into PUSD?" And I know that was more of a rhetorical question, but, you know, one of the things as a parent I want to see is the consistency and organization. And I think consistency means going back to school from summer school, seeing the same teachers that makes students feel safe. I think it's good for the community, and it really plays an important role. So just picking off teachers doesn't really show good faith, and I think that that's really important to have that. It really provides substance for parents, for the students, and so I wanted to share that with you. I know it's a hard choice to make, but I would hope that you could find some way other to wean the budget instead of cutting teachers, because they're so important. And some of the teachers that I've worked with at school really help, and that's an important thing, that we have that parent-teacher participation, because after all, the first thing you see in a school is going to be that smile from a teacher. And when those kids grow up and they see that teacher year after year, even if they're not in that class, that means a lot to the students and a lot to the school, and that gives it consistency. So I hope you take that into consideration, and when you're doing your budget cuts, and see how that really affects the community. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Consuelo Martinez. I would like to start off by thanking Board Member Tina Fredericks for being the one vote against our layoffs. I stand before you today, not just as a teacher, but as an alumna of this very district. I want you to hear my testimony and understand the depth of my commitment to this community during this time of loss, recovery, and rebuilding. I received my K through 12 education here, starting at Burbank Elementary, and then Wilson Middle School, and I graduated from John Muir High School in 2015, where I now have the privilege of teaching. It's a testament to the district's pride in alumni returning and to give back to their community, yet today I'm here to address the painful reality that contradicts that pride. It should be noted that Burbank closed in 2011, and Wilson closed in 2020, voted upon by our Board of Education at that time, and now as I reach my 10-year high school anniversary, I am being laid off by my alma mater, a bitter irony that underscores the fragility of our educational system. In the aftermath of the Eaton fires, our community needs stability and support. Instead, we're facing layoffs that will impact teachers, students, and families. As a Puente English teacher, I empower underrepresented students to pursue higher education and challenge systemic oppression, and it's heartbreaking to see our efforts dismantled when they're most needed. My journey began with inspiring teachers like my Puente English teacher, Ms. Parent, my AP Lit teacher, Mr. Vines, and I now work alongside Dr. Gonzalez-Huser, who was my Puente counselor. It's a full-circle moment that fills me with pride and purpose, however, it's also a painful reminder of what we stand to lose. Mr. Vines, who inspired me to teach, will be losing his position as our site RTI coach alongside 50 other TOSAs. Ms. Acevedo, our EL coach, who was also losing her job, was my 7th grade Spanish teacher at Wilson. This is only my second year of teaching, a time where many new educators are still finding their footing, and statistically, almost half of new teachers will quit after five years. Naively, I didn't think my departure would come as a layoff, a packet signed by someone who's never met me, yet stating that my services are appreciated and valued. Ten years ago, I mentioned wanting to become a teacher, and many warned me against it, and still I committed. At the beginning of this school year, the district proudly shared a slogan called "The Power of Us," and when I look around this room, I do see "The Power of Us." Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sandy Rothman, and I am a parent of a 6th grader at Actavia E. Butler. OEB is a school that serves predominantly Black and Brown surrounding neighborhoods that historically have been under-resourced and overlooked by our district, city, and county. This has only been made more evident by the enormous blow our community has been hit with following the recent fires that have decimated our region. Many of our students, educators, and staff are displaced, which we expect to continue for a long time. As a parent, I can say that the single most important asset we can offer our children right now is continuity and routine. We all witnessed the disruptive impact that COVID had on our children, and we cannot afford for that to happen again in the aftermath of this fire. Our community and our school were on an upswing prior to January 7th. As a parent, volunteer assisting with school tours, we saw more and more elementary schools represented among our prospective families. After a hard-fought recovery from the days of COVID, OEB was thriving again. Right now, the only normalcy our children have are the hours they spend at school with the familiar faces of their educators in the programs that will lay the foundation of their future. We are a community in crisis, keenly aware that we are at risk of losing an entire generation of children to these traumas, traumas that they did not ask for nor deserve. We simply cannot afford another upheaval in these kids' lives. I am asking today that when you, the leadership within our district, make your decisions about the future of our schools, you will do so with OEB and Altadena schools at the forefront of your minds, and that you will continue to support, preserve, and protect the signature programs and the education staff at Actavia E. Butler. Thank you.
Denise Robb, Jonathan Gardner, Sergio Lopez Lucero.
Hi, everybody, I'm Denise Robb, I'm the PTA president at Blair, and I live here, of course. And first, I want to thank you for all you do, because I know this is essentially a volunteer position, and I know it's hard and stressful, so thank you for the long hours, and thank you for, I was told you're keeping the International Baccalaureate Program alive, and if that is true, I want to thank you for that. Yes. In fact, right before I came here, I got an email from a new parent who said their kid was at, I think he said Saint Philip the Apostle, some private school, and because of the International Baccalaureate Program, they're coming to Blair next year. So that's exciting. But I wanted to say, don't, if you could rescind the pink slips that you've given to the IB teachers, and do not merge the IB coordinators into one coordinator, because we could lose accreditation. I don't, I don't think this is the only path, I think there's another path here. I looked through your 192-page budget, most of it, I didn't understand a lot of it, by the way, most of it was projected and theoretical. The new budget has millions more than the last budget. We don't yet know how things are going to shake out, and this is our history at PUSD. Over and over, we lay off teachers, give them pink slips, then we hire them once we have more money, and we know there's more money, but it's too late, a lot of them have found other jobs. And there's been studies that show that teachers actually leave the profession altogether, and this is an important noble profession, we want people here. This is what keeps people coming to public school, and this is our, this is my number one mission in Pasadena, is to get more children into public school. So, this year, this year especially, this year, just say no. This is not a year like any other year. This year, your report said you were advised by the State Board of Education, quote, "to move forward with any reductions that were already planned before the fire." No, no, just say no. You must say no to that. Things have changed drastically. Ninety PUSD teachers lost their homes and everything they own in the Eaton fire. Some of these teachers and staff have been given pink slips. You can't take their jobs away from them right after they lost their homes and everything they own, you just can't do that, that's inhumane. Just say no, find another way, and there's still time for you to do the right thing.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Gardner, I'm the president of the United Teachers of Pasadena. I've been a math, physics, chemistry, and geology teacher. In my first couple of years of teaching, I was proud to be at Blair, where the second year, we experienced 50% of our teachers being laid off. We were on an upswing at that time, and after that point, we went into doldrums for a number of years. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that that is what you have in store if you continue forward with this decision. I proudly represent 899 UTP bargaining unit members in Pasadena Unified. We all, as a community, just went through one of the most devastating fires in recent American history, and yet, the wildfire you are unleashing on our schools is unconscionable. The vast majority of the cuts you have enacted to balance your budget have been in our schools, resulting in 125 teachers being told they don't have a job next year. That is more than two schools' worth of teachers, teachers who have poured their hearts and souls for our PUSD students this year, and some even over a decade. Not only has confusion gone out from PUSD that these cuts are from central office, but there even seems to be confusion about how many exactly you are cutting. It is 125. The 65 individuals who were laid off last week are in addition to 60-plus temporary teachers. These teachers aren't even being afforded the legal protections of these 65, even though the ed joint application, neither the ed joint application nor their principals knew that they were hired as temporary. The pattern this district has of layoffs and rehiring is the epitome of waste and abuse. We must stop the churn, prioritize the classroom, and rebuild stable, predictable schools. Our students deserve stability. Thank you.
We see you, we hear you, we understand your pain and frustration. I'm Sergio Lopez, I'm a product of PUSD, I went to Jackson Elliott, class of 2014 at Pasadena High School, and now I am a math teacher at John Muir High School. And I am a victim of the Eaton fire, and I got laid off this year. My pain and frustration, I don't think anybody here can understand, I don't think anybody here can see the faces that my students made when I told them the news. I don't think anybody here understands the pain and frustration of me and my dad trying to save our house and having to leave when we knew that it was too late. And once I had to come to terms that my house was gone, all I had to look forward to was my classroom, where all the things that I own, all that I had left that I owned was in my classroom, and now that's getting taken away from me. That's getting taken away from me, the students that I worked so very hard to work with and inspire. How am I supposed to inspire them, like the teachers that inspired me when I was in high school? When I was a senior in high school, Dr. Claire Verdi, both my parents lost their jobs, and she helped me so much in order to mold me into the person that I am today. And all I wish is that for her to see, she can't see me be the teacher I am now because she passed away to Lou Gehrig's AKLS, and she turned a subject that I hated, English, into something that I love so much, and I try to do the same with my math class. I have parents here whose kids I've worked with for a year, two years now, and I love, I love my job, I love John Muir High School, I love everything that it is to be here in Pasadena. My kids have been through so much, and they've kept me up. When I told them the news about my layoff, the first kid to tell me to keep their head up was a kid who lost everything. A kid, this is my second year being riffed, so my pain and frustration, I don't think anybody here sees that. I don't think anybody here understands that, understands how much I've gone through. I don't think anybody understands how I had to step away from my classroom for 20 minutes because I was sobbing, and my kids had to console me, because my pain and frustration goes past anything, this has been the worst two months of my entire life. And all I want to do is to come back next year and to continue to inspire the youth that we have in this amazing city and this amazing school. Colleagues who have supported me throughout this fire and throughout everything are also getting laid off, and it's unfortunate. So we see you, we hear you, understand your pain, my pain, my pain is a lot, my pain goes through so much. There's days like today where I feel like I'm not, I can't even do my job anymore because I've been through so much, and I doubt myself now, that I want to and this amazing school. Colleagues who have supported me throughout this fire and throughout everything are also getting laid off. And it's unfortunate. So, we see you, we hear you, understand your pain. My pain, my pain is a lot. My pain goes through so much. There's days like today where I feel like I'm not, I can't even do my job anymore because I've been through so much. And I doubt myself now that I want to return and I want to be back and I don't think, yeah.
Frances Milges.
Hi, I'm back. Good evening. My name is Frances Milges. I'm a teacher at Octavia Butler Middle School, but I'm also a parent of a PUSD student. My child has attended PUSD schools since kindergarten and is currently a junior at John Muir High School. Yesterday, they celebrated their 17th birthday, and today they returned to school after being on independent study for three weeks. You see, we lost our home in the Eaton Fire. And to a person on the autism spectrum, routine and structure are everything. Well, all routine was lost with our house. However, one thing my child did have, though, were the teachers who went out of their way to make sure they were okay. Because Muir teachers were there for my child, not just now, but throughout their time at Muir. The transition back to routine today was seamless. Teaching students is about content, yes, but it's also about building relationships that continue from year to year to year. I want to say thank you to Ms. Dow and Mr. Smalenberg and Mrs. Drew and Ms. Moore and Ms. Chang for being there for my kid. Thank you to Dr. Gonzalez for taking the time with hundreds of students to serve to make my Elsie feel seen. Members of the board, I hope and pray that those teachers will be there next year. Our kids need them.
That's the end of public comment.
Thank you very much. We will move to action items. Item one, Mr. Bravo Karimi, certification of 2024, 2025, second interim budget report.
Okay, so I'm going to provide an overview of second interim fiscal timeline as well as some information that we did discuss at the last board meeting, but a general outlook of the state and district's finances and then the district's multi-year projection. So, I'm going to cover this quickly. Second interim is a required report that we submit. We do a first interim in December, second interim now in mid-March. We are required to certify it as either positive, qualified, or negative. And then it's submitted to the County Office of Education, Laco. And second interim captures changes since June adopted budget all the way through expenditures and revenues and projections with actuals through January 31st. The recommendation tonight is for the board to certify PUSD's financial condition as positive. The district is projected to meet its financial obligations this year and the two subsequent fiscal years, so that's through '26, '27. However, this is largely due to fire-related insurance revenues that currently are exceeding fire-related expenditures. And I'm going to cover that in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. So, key points. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago, the superintendent budget advisory committee completed the prioritization process. We presented recommendations that came out of that process as well as our comprehensive planning process at the board meeting on February 27th. It should be noted also that as part of its approval of the current year budget, Laco did require the submission of a fiscal stabilization plan at first interim. So, if you remember, first interim, we came with a request to get an approval of the certification of first interim as well as a fiscal stabilization plan. Now, an FSP at second interim is not required by Laco because of the board approval of reductions back on February 27th as well as the details of the MYP that I'm going to discuss in a moment. So, '24, '25 unrestricted general fund ending balances are projected to be $29.2 million at the end of the current year. That's the current projection. It's 6.4 million higher than at June adopted budget. That's primarily due to the fact that the ending balances from last fiscal year were higher than anticipated. So, after June, after the June budget for the current year, we came back in September with an update on our actuals for last year. So, last year's ending balances were higher than expected, which flows through into the current year. They are, however, $39.3 million lower than at the end of '23, '24 due to deficit spending. So, we talked a lot in several previous board meetings about what's an operating deficit versus an operating surplus. And so, again, an operating deficit is when we spend more in a fiscal year than we bring in in revenue. And so, here at the bottom of the table, you'll see that '23, '24, last school year, we had an operating deficit of $7.4 million. That was the first time we've had a deficit in many years. For the current year, we are projecting an operating deficit or spending more than we bring in of almost $40 million. Okay? So, that $40 million, as we've talked about many times, that money has to come from somewhere. It comes from our reserves. And that kind of deficit spending cannot last forever, right? It can only last as long as we have reserves, and we are projected to spend those reserves down very quickly. So, '25, '26, we're currently projecting an operating deficit of $29.5 million. And then in '26, '27, a small operating surplus of $1.7 million. But I'm going to explain why that is. So, this is the fiscal timeline where you are here at second interim. We are now at second interim, and coming up after this is, in May, the state, the governor will release an update to their proposed budget for next school year. We'll get a lot of good information about the state's budget, and then, of course, we'll adopt our budget in June. So, this is information that we discussed at the last board meeting. But continued declining enrollment, those one-time COVID relief funds that buoyed our finances over the last few years have been fully spent. And again, I won't cover everything again, but the one big factor that's impacting our finances substantially is that our unduplicated pupil percentage this year is four percentage points lower than it was last year. And that has a substantial negative impact on our local control funding, our LCFF funding, specifically our supplemental concentration grant funding. So, declining enrollment, you're well aware, we've had declining enrollment for some time, and that, of course, is projected to continue into the future. I covered this again last time, but I'll just briefly mention that there's a bit of mixed bag of good and bad news from the governor's proposed budget back in January. There is a discretionary block grant, additional learning recovery emergency block grant funds, an increase in the TK add-on, and then, of course, a hold harmless for lost enrollment and attendance for Pasadena Unified School District as a result of the Eaton Fire for '25, '26. On the negative side, the COLA for next year is about half a percentage point lower than what was previously assumed in our multi-year projection for next school year. So, as you're well aware, I mentioned this earlier, there were two big main processes that identified the reductions that are now reflected, mostly reflected at second interim. There was a superintendent budget advisory committee and the comprehensive planning process. Something I mentioned at the last board meeting that I do want to mention again is that after consultation with FICMAT, the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team, as well as Laco and the State Board of Education, they did advise to move forward with reductions that were planned before the fire. And that is what we asked the board to approve on February 27th. It's important to note that the proposed reductions are not sufficient to close the shortfall. And I'm going to demonstrate in a few slides what, how that looks, what that means. They were the reductions that, while very, very impactful, very, very painful, were not sufficient to address the fiscal issues that we're facing. Right now, the proposed ADA hold harmless is only for '25, '26 for next school year. That's in the budget trailer language. While it's not official law yet, we have reflected it at second interim. So, the revenue impact, the benefit of that, is reflected in our financials at second interim. But it's not official law, and I just want to make that clear. It's not official law yet, but we did consult with Laco and FICMAT, and they were comfortable with us assuming its passage at second interim. So, here's just some information, some of the major assumptions, average daily attendance assumptions. You'll see that for '24, '25, and '25, '26, the current ADA, the current year ADA is the same. That is the ADA hold harmless that I mentioned. Our actual ADA for both this year and next year will certainly be much lower than that. But we will be using that as part of the LCSF funding formula, and this is what's assumed in our multi-year projection and our revenue projections at second interim. On the bottom there, you'll see the COLA assumptions, how they've changed since first interim now to second interim. You'll see the '25, '26, what I mentioned before, about a half percentage point lower. But you will see that in '26, '27, about a half, almost a half percentage point higher. So, the key points. The ADA hold harmless is not sufficient to offset the negative impact of the lower unduplicated pupil percentage on LCSF revenue. No doubt, the hold harmless is very welcome. We're going to continue to advocate for additional years of hold harmless. But the negative impact on the lower, of the lower UPP on our revenue is greater than the positive impact of that hold harmless. So, the net impact on our revenue is negative.
Can you say that sentence again in English?
Sure. So, the ADA hold harmless that we're going to get, whereby next year, we're going to be funded based on enrollment and attendance that's higher than what we're going to actually have next year. It's going to be based on a pre-fire number. That alone is going to mean more revenue than we otherwise would have received. The unduplicated pupil percentage, that's lower by four percentage points, has a corresponding negative impact on revenue. The size of that negative impact is greater than the size of the positive impact, so it's a net reduction in our revenue. So, I just wanted to make that point, that the hold harmless is, of course, very important. It's very helpful. But the LCSF revenue is still down overall because of the combined impact of these two things. The reductions approved by the board on February 27th made a significant impact on the multi-year projections. However, the multi-year projection would not reflect positive general fund, unassigned, unappropriated, ending balances if not for the fact that currently, today, our fire-related insurance revenues exceed fire-related expenditures. That's today. The expenditures related to the fire will increase very substantially. We are in the very early stages of dealing with the fire. Okay? So, it's just a fact of timing right now that today, the proceeds we've received so far from the insurance company exceed the expenditures we've incurred so far, but that will not continue. As it stands, additional reductions will be necessary in the future. So, I'm going to go through a few MYPs, and I'm sorry, and I'm going to do my best to explain what each of them mean, but I think I want to start with the one that is the most important. That is, first, in the blue bars, the first interim, the balances that we would have had, the unassigned, unappropriated ending balances that we would have had at first interim if there was no fiscal stabilization plan. You can think of this of what, if the board had taken no action, what would the multi-year projection have looked like? Okay, that's at first interim, the blue bars. The orange bars are now at second interim, so it reflects all the things I just talked about, the hold harmless, but also the lower UPP. The reductions that were just approved by the board. What is not included here are those fire-related revenues or the fire-related expenditures. Okay? What would things have looked like if we didn't have those insurance revenues and the fire-related expenditures? You will see an improvement from first interim. Okay? So, even though there were some good news and bad news and things that improved our balances and things that made the balances lower, we did make significant progress. But you'll see that without the insurance revenues, we would still be projected to be negative $28 million by the end of the '26, '27 school year. So, when I said that additional actions will be necessary in the future, this is what I mean. Okay, so this next one is first interim again. It's still showing the first interim without the fiscal stabilization plan. And then now, the orange bar is showing second interim, but the balances with the fire-related expenditures and the insurance revenue. So, you'll see that because of the insurance revenue, the fact that the insurance revenues today are greater than the fire expenditures, we do project positive ending balances just barely for both '25, '26 and '26, '27. And then finally, this is what we actually submitted to Laco for first interim, which is what our balances would have been with the fiscal stabilization plan. And then now, at second interim, with those fire-related expenditures and insurance revenues. So, factors now reflected in the MYP. Any future changes in compensation? Any additional costs related to compensation? Any costs related to any negotiated agreement? Not reflected. To the extent those things cost money, that will make the MYP lower. Those ending balances will be lower. Any unknown liabilities that we may incur in the future are not reflected. The potential impact of an economic downturn. We've been following the news. There's been a lot of volatility in economic indicators. Any impact of that, not reflected in the multi-year projection. Any potential reductions in state or federal funding? You've probably also read a lot in the papers about potential impacts on federal funding in particular. Not reflected in the multi-year projection. And any new major programmatic or operational investments? Anything that costs money, again, is not reflected. In the appendix, I'm not going to go through the appendix slides. They were there just for the benefit of the public in the spirit of transparency. And now I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you very much. It was very informative. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you for the presentation. You had said about the fire insurance revenues exceeds the expenses at this point, but in the future, it won't. So, we'll be in the negative. So, are those numbers that you're estimating for the income or the revenues? Are they estimates or are they confirmed by the insurance?
We've received proceeds from the insurance company. So, even though we haven't filed our final claim, given the size of our losses, the extent of our losses, and this is very common, you, given the substantial need for cash because we are paying substantial expenses, the best example of things that we've already begun to pay are for the cleaning and testing of our schools, and those are in the many, many millions of dollars. And so, given the substantial need that school, any folks going, any organization going through the types of losses that we have, the insurance company will give you kind of advanced releases even before your claim is finalized, and so that's what's reflected. The expenditures that we're going to incur in the future is still very unclear. We don't, we can't, we don't know exactly what those costs will be. And it's going to be a multi-year process whereby we're going to be incurring expenses related to the fire.
But you feel like the net is going to be a negative net?
It's hard to say whether it'll be negative. It may be. We're going to seek reimbursement for every expense that we incur. But it's not going to be what you see now, which is a positive, a net income as a result of it. That's kind of a fluke of timing because of where we are right now in our spending related to the fire.
And then the last slide about the federal funding, volatility of the federal funding is not reflected.
That's right.
Which means we are kind of, the budget is sort of, if things go not well at the federal level, then this is actually a safer scenario than, or I'm trying to think of the right word.
There's a risk that we're reflecting federal revenues currently at a higher level than it actually be.
At a higher level, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Just a clarification on federal revenue. Are you speaking to dollars such as Title I? Or is that inclusive of what could be potential reimbursements from FEMA? Or a combination of the two?
Right now, the MYP makes assumptions related to principally Title I, federal funding we get for special education, reimbursements we get for the National Meal Program. No assumptions about FEMA, potential FEMA reimbursements. Of course, we're going to seek to be reimbursed for everything that we're eligible for. So, the things that would have the negative impact on the multi-year projection that we're showing on the restricted side would be the examples that you gave. Title I, Title I, IDEA funding for special education, and also even our meals program.
Will there also be any federal grants that may be frozen, or?
Yeah, it's possible, definitely.
Are those dollars calculated in? Let me ask a question again.
Okay.
If we have any current federal grants that are either already frozen or likely to be frozen, are those dollars backed out of our multi-year projection?
If we're aware of the loss of any funds, yes, we would reflect them, but we don't, we haven't assumed any reductions that have been proposed or that are hypothetical at this point. But it is a risk, as I mentioned a moment ago.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kenny.
I had a question on the assumptions. So one of the things was that health and welfare, our assumption, it says for the two out years, 25, 26, and 26, 27, that health insurance will stay flat. At adopted, it actually said it would go up 5% each year. How confident are we that health insurance won't increase for two years?
So to the extent anything costs more than we've assumed, that'll be a hit to our multi-year projection?
Okay. I mean, we haven't, I know we had some really low health and welfare increase years. I mean, we had some big, and then we had a really nice little lull. Is there anything kind of out in the marketplace that has?
We don't know yet.
All right. In the answers to some of the questions, there was a comment about the number of TOSA I positions that we will be reassigning to the new job description, and I think on February 27th, that number was fairly vague. The answers to the questions seem to imply that we've picked a number that we are going to put under the new job description. So in other words, the number of people that we signed the resolution for is going to be reduced, and the number that I heard running around was 44 positions, TOSA I's will be coming back. Is that?
Sure.
And so, is there a number that are in the budget? So I think what you, when I'd asked this question two weeks ago, I said, when you say that the total amount cut is 12 million, how, did that include all of the TOSAs, the 57?
It was net of any, it was net of any restorations.
So net of the restorations, to me, says that you know the amount of the restorations, number of people wise, or else it would have been hard to?
We had to make an assumption.
So that's, I'm wondering, can we share that assumption of how many?
We did not, they include the restorations, correct? I mean, they don't include the restoration, so we don't know yet, because that's depending on federal funding, that's a desire that we have. So right now, we're not hiring any positions out of federal funding, new positions. It's something we would like to do, but we don't know if we're going to get federal money, that's still in flex, and we learned about a grant from the US Department of Education yesterday that might be able to help us restore some of the positions. That's why we can't really say a number, because we haven't, you know, that's an idea.
No, no, I'm just asking for the number that we did not include in the 12 million, because that's already been calculated.
Yeah, we didn't want to overstate the savings, so we can get back to you on what the number is.
So we had a number of individuals, and so we netted that out of it.
We wanted to make a responsible assumption about what the savings would be, and not to overstate the amount of the savings.
Because it sounds like what Dr. Blanco is saying is, if there's additional money, then we might look into hiring additional people back, but we did make some assumption. Okay. And then I just, I've been hearing kind of questions about the temporary contracts. So, two weeks ago, the PowerPoint talked about, I think it was 24.1 temporary positions were being, I can't remember the exact language, but then I heard the number 60 today, and can someone help me understand the difference between those numbers?
Sure, I can shed some light. I don't know where the 60 number came from. The presentation that came before you, it showed you where there was going to be 24, there was temps where the positions were going to be closed. There was an additional 20, I believe, temps, but those temps are, will not be returning because they are making actually, there are positions that we're holding for other teachers with greater seniority.
I mean, the temp contract is a one-year defined date?
Absolutely.
And it's only renewed if there's an agreement to renew it?
Yes.
Or maybe it's a new contract?
Per the Ed Code and per the collective bargaining agreement, they're considered true vacancies each year, so the person would actually have to apply for the position each year. So they are aware when they sign the contract that it's a temp contract, and at the end of that temp contract, they actually have to apply for the position, per the Ed Code and per their collective bargaining agreement, it's considered a true vacancy.
So, can you help me understand just a little bit better? When would we hire someone on a temp contract? Is it a certain type of job, a certain type of vacancy? Is it used when there is budget uncertainty?
Certainly. And there was an RFI that the association requested, and we provided the information to them quite a few months ago. Never heard a response. Those are typically done when you have what's called a teacher on leave. The Ed Code does define when a teacher on leave, as an example would be when the union president's out of the classroom, we would backfill that union president because we have to hold that spot. They have rights to go back to a position, so we would hold that position for them. A temp contract is hired to allow for that person to return back to the classroom at some point. Teachers on special assignments are typically as well. So if there's somebody out on medical leave, there's a myriad, a myriad of reasons of why you would hire someone on a temp contract. In addition to funding sources related, but all of our temp positions have been backfills, not based on funding source.
All right. So approximately 40, it's, so even, so if I'm a teacher in a classroom and I get promoted to be a TOSA I or a TOSA II, the position that I've left vacant, because I have return rights, is we use a temp contract?
That is correct.
Okay. And that, we've been doing that for a couple of years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, hi, Simone. Thank you for this report. Can you go back to Slide 3, please, and go ahead, if you would, elaborate on your last bullet about the funding, the additional funding being largely due to the fire-related insurance revenues? Because my question is, why the funding from the insurance companies is not going into an account related specifically for facilities?
Not all of the expenses are related to future rebuilding, for one. There are a lot of expenses we're seeking to be reimbursed for, including for the replacement of furniture, instructional materials. So there's a lot of different types of expenditures, so that's maybe why we wouldn't put it in a facility-specific fund.
How do you differentiate between the amounts, or what's going towards, say, other needs versus rebuilding, or the fire-related building, facilities?
So ultimately, it's to go the process that we're working on with risk management, and of course, business services, and it's always going to be based on the insurance contract that we have. It includes all these different limits on different types of things that you get coverage for, just like a lot of different, you know, insurance that you might have for your car or your home. And so, our objective is of course, to get the largest amount of claim as we're eligible for, and we work with obviously, risk management, that's a lot of experience in this, as well as with consultants that will help us prepare those claims. But of course, we track every fire-related expenditure, and we have a lot of backup documentation for why it's justified. So that's why we don't put it in a facilities-specific fund. If we had, let's say, put all the revenues and expenditures in a separate fund, not in the general fund, then we would not be certifying as positive, and we would be projecting negative ending balances through 26, 27, and even next school year, at the end of next school year.
So, so where's the transparency in that spending? If it's in with the general fund, how can we tell when those funds are being used for fire-related?
We're tracking everything in a specific location related to the emergency, so that everything is like coded, if you will, in our, what's called, you know, in our account string, so that we can easily report on and track, not just the revenues, but the expenditures related to the fire.
And we'll be able to see that when we look at the budget information?
Yeah, we could produce reports about that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Velazquez?
Okay, so when we do a budget, we have to project to three years, so it's, we don't only have to balance this year, but the following two.
That's right.
Okay. So I'm concerned with the following statements. Proposed reductions are not sufficient to close the shortfall, meaning that with the cuts that we've made, we still don't close the needles, meaning we're spending still more than money.
That's right.
You also said that we're using one-time emergency money for now to balance the budget. Does that mean that next year, we're going to, A, still be in a difficult situation, B, we're going to have even bigger problems because we use the one-time monies to pay for this year's reductions, and we're going to have to make up for that once we start spending the money from the fire? And three, it says here that PSC is not implementing reduction spend, some potential loss of enrollment. And so, on top of that, so is this a setup for an even worse situation next year?
We will need additional reductions, yes. What I'm not proposing is that we spend the one-time insurance revenues for ongoing operations. I'm just saying that currently, just because of the way we report our finances, they are resulting in positive ending balances, and it's temporary, to your point. Even, I think a couple of weeks ago, when we came forward with those very difficult recommendations, we said they were not enough, that we would need to make more reductions in the future. And that's still the case a couple of weeks later, now that we have more updated projections. We will need to, unless something very material changes that we don't know about, we will need to make additional reductions next year, for the, for the following school year. Even if we get the hold harmless extended beyond 25, 26, for many additional years, that will help, that will not be enough. Even if we get five years, it won't be enough. The way that the funding works for LCFF is, the ADA for 25, 26, next year, right, we're getting the hold harmless next year, that benefits the revenue in the following three years after 25, 26. It doesn't in fact, impact the LCFF revenue in 25, 26 itself, just because of the way the formula works. And so those revenue benefits, even from a five, seven-year hold harmless, will certainly be very, very important and very, very helpful, but the benefits of those on our revenues are far into the future.
Mr. Harden?
Kind of going back to the Slide 3, and following on Board Member Bailey's focus on the, on the fire-related insurance, and then the issues brought up by Dr. Velazquez, can you clarify for me what, if we, if this, if our financial condition were qualified instead of positive, what would be the actions we would have to take, or the effect of that?
Typically, LACO would require a fiscal stabilization plan. And so we would submit at, as long as we're qualified, we'd be submitting fiscal stabilization plans at first interim, second interim, June adopted. You know, LACO may ask for additional information about how we're going to address these financial issues. You know, it's not clear, Mike Fine, a couple of weeks ago, talked a little bit about kind of when districts get into substantial financial distress. Eventually, there's no exact formula for like, when that gets triggered. You know, it's not clearly defined. But if we continued to have repeated qualified and even negative certification in several interim reports in a row, then yeah, ultimately, we could be in pre-receivership, and then ultimately, receivership. I'm not sure if that was your question?
Well, and the fact that the fire-related, you know, expenses, revenues, seem a bit unknown to me, that, that's the concern I have, is just that a lot of our, a lot of what we're presuming is positive is right. We may not be using the funds for operating expenses, but we're sort of riding on the wave of the assumption that we will have, that our fire, that our insurance outcomes are, keep us in a positive.
No, I don't, I don't want that to be the conclusion that you take from this.
Yeah.
The conclusion I want you to take from this is that, because of a fluke of timing, today, our insurance revenues exceed our insurance expenditures. I don't want you to take away, and because of that, we can certify as positive. We've talked to LACO, of course, before this presentation, and then they've confirmed this. What I want you to take away is that we have more work to do. That one-time revenues, to Dr. Velazquez's point, one-time, even if we were going to have excess insurance revenues above excess insurance expenditure, fire expenditures, ongoing expenditure should be paid for with ongoing revenues.
Okay.
Dr. Blanco?
I think it's important that you're restating that, Mr. Bravo-Creamy. Can you go to the slide that talks about unforeseen things that can come up in the future? So, you know, we're in negotiations right now. Our labor partners are asking us for things that cost money. It's important to know, none of this is baked into what we're showing you today. We've had an unforeseen circumstance come up already with our LCFF funding. When we rebenched and people reapply, it lasted for three years for our supplemental and concentration money, so we came in four percentage points lower than we expected. That's a loss of $1.5 million this year, that if it's compounded over three years, will be $9 million, right? So we do have a plan to go back out and try to, you know, capture some more forms, right? So, she wants me to say English, so maybe you can help me translate what that means?
Yeah, so, as I mentioned, the unduplicated pupil percentage is four percentage points lower. We are of course, going to make every effort to collect the forms that would increase that percentage in the future. We've assumed that it will increase in the future. This year's percentage is calculated, we can't change it.
So we're required to conduct the survey, and the survey came to the disadvantage of the district?
Yes.
And that means that we're losing $1.4 million in addition to everything else, and $1.4 million times three years. Is that?
No, it actually, it escalates.
$1.4 million this year. If we don't collect more forms next year, which, you know, we might have less students, we don't know that right now, that will be compounding. So that's an example of an unforeseen circumstance that hits the budget.
So it's $1.4 this year, and next year it could be two, three, and the following year it can be four, five?
Okay.
That's exactly right. And so I think, and it's a point Board Member Kenny mentioned earlier, is there are some assumptions in here, we know, of course, you know, to be consistent with accounting principles, and of course, to make sure that LACO approves our projections. You know, typically, of course, we err on the side of being conservative, but there are some examples of assumptions that arguably are not very conservative. And to the extent they're wrong, to the extent they were overly optimistic, the forecast will be worse even than what I'm showing you.
So our plan will have to be, again, to bring together the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee and start over again in August, right? And I did hear from our board that you would like to be more involved in some of the decision-making, and we'll try to figure out how we can, you know, make that happen. It was brought to my attention that there was one chapter in the book that, where some of the presentations should have come to the board, and we'll work on improving the process, but we will have to have a process, again, that involves, you know, multiple voices from our educational partners to continue to reduce the budget. Now, the good news is, the governor's trailer bill also is putting in some new revenues for us, right?
That's right.
That can help us reduce the amount of money that we need to cut next year. So those are things that, you know, are positive unforeseen circumstances, and we're going to continue to advocate for Pasadena Unified, who's been through this, you know, horrific challenge with the Eden Fire. So that's why we have three iterations of the budget, because things are continuously changing, sometimes for the positive.
Any other questions? Dr. Velazquez?
So I think that the question, the most common question that I hear is... So I think that the question, the most common question that I hear is, why does it seem like Pasadena's always cutting? So we are cutting, and then we're cutting again, and then we're cutting again, and they were permanently in the state of, in this particular state? Why, why, why does that happen?
Yeah, so I, it, it's cold comfort probably, but I think most districts feel the same way. Most school communities feel the same way. Part of it is that in California, funding for education is a lot more volatile than in other states. Because so much of state revenues that provide the, the bulk of funding for education relies on income taxes, capital gains taxes, sales taxes, it's more volatile than property taxes. In California, property taxes compared to most states are quite low. Property taxes are much more stable from one year to the next. And so that's one reason why we see a lot more ups and downs in funding levels for education in California is because of how we get the revenues from the state, how the state gets the revenues and how they give them that. So that's one reason why we see a lot more volatility. And, and right now, we're dealing with a unique set of circumstances where a lot of this, big districts, a lot of urban districts, even non-urban districts are dealing with declining enrollment, and have been for a long time. And we've been shielded from the negative impact of that for the last several years. One, because of COVID relief funds, and also because the state itself held us harmless from the impacts to our revenue from declining enrollment. That's over. And so now, a lot of the things that we would have normally experienced over the last few years that we've been shielded from, we are experiencing in full. So many different factors, a perfect storm, if you will, all at once.
So, do we have a motion?
I'm, I'm over approval.
Second, did you?
Well, we can still do advocacy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I need a second. Second, I was asking. Okay, so do we have a discussion on this? Yes, Ms. Kenny?
One of the items noted in the narrative about potential future reductions is decreasing reduction in sites and department supplemental and concentration allocations, although that also may be current year as well. But I just want to say I am against decreasing the amount of funds that go to schools, especially from S and C. Already, in this last year, only about 5% of the supplemental and concentration funds from LCFF that we get go to schools. I'm in favor of giving more money to schools directly, rather than spending it on their behalf centrally, so that each site has the flexibility to decide, do we want a wellness coach? Do we want a EL coach? You know, what, what is the thing that we need? As opposed to maybe the district saying, everybody's getting one of these, everybody's getting one of these too. And we're only sending, I think my calculation said we're only sending 40% of the Title I money that we get goes to, directly to sites. And some of it has to be allocated other ways, but it's, I, I know there's a fear that sites won't spend it, but one of the things, and we saw this when we used to distribute Title III monies to schools, when you give a school site $6,000, because that's back what it was in the day, there's nothing you can do with $6,000 that's very interesting. So the smaller amounts we give a site, and if they can't hire a person with it, they end up spending it on little things that aren't as meaningful. Whereas back when my kids were Burbank, and we got, you know, $300,000 for an elementary school, we could hire three TOSAs. Now, you can't, you can't get three TOSAs for that amount of money anymore, but I'm saying. So I just want to think about, are we, are we, when we split the money up certain ways, we may be disadvantaging good decisions from the sites. I, I want to advocate for a fiscal stabilization plan that has specific items on it with the amounts and the expected instructional or operational impact. I know that we approved layoffs two weeks ago, but we didn't, I, I don't know that we, as a board, were able to understand or approve budget cuts. We've never seen kind of what's included. I know that the Sback looked at packages, I know the board has access to the package information, but the public does not. And I've found it very difficult to understand, even when you tell me, well, we're doing 90% package for that department. I don't know what that means. I don't know what are the five or three or two things are that are getting cut. And I think it's really important to explain the impact. When we reduce the number of teachers at each school site to go back to staffing to ratio, what is the potential impact for the programs? We need to be able to explain to people what's happening. The board needs to understand, the community needs to understand, and the board needs to be able to have conversations where we either are reassuring people or, or confirming to them, yes, this is one of those things that might happen. I sent Dr. Blanco today a couple of examples of fiscal stabilization plans from 1718 and 1819 that were in that kind of format. And I think, just like, again, having that impact, I think, is really important. And, and I want to echo what Dr. Blanco said about looking at how we're going to approach doing budget development and program planning next year. I thank you for talking about the board not really being part of it. I think it's, as with any process, this was, even though we kind of did this process before, this was, I think, different than the prior Superintendent's Budget Advisory Council. It's always good to do a recap, what went well, what didn't go well, you know, how should, you know, when should things happen next year, when should we start, maybe August is too late, you know, I, I don't know. So I hope that that kind of discussion will happen. And, and I think we should be open to input about how can we improve that process? Not make it more difficult, not make it more time-consuming, but make it more, that we're sure that we're making the budget decisions that align with our values and our strategic plan, and we can communicate them well. And then on our, on our certification for our budget, you know, because we, on the screen that you showed, the slide that you showed that had those continuing deficits, so this year 39, next year it was 27, 29?
Yep.
Well, actually, I don't think you showed the deficits, I'm sorry, you didn't show the deficits. But it's between 20 and 30 million dollars deficit this year, next year, and the following year. And, you know, when we sent LACO our fiscal stabilization plan at first interim, it said we're going to cut 27 million, and we cut 12. So we're going to have to cut about 12 next year. So the same pain we're feeling this year, we're going to do again next year. And it looks, when, you know, when you take the fire money out, it looks like we're going to do it a third year, too. About 12 each of these three years, unless, unless things change, which, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. And we may have taken some of the easier, I'm not saying they feel easier to the people who are being laid off or, you know, the ramifications for class size. But the next set of, you know, to get to 12 million is hard. So we have, we have a lot of work to do. So again, it's not, oh, we might have to make a few cuts next year. We have to make the same dollar amount for the next two years, potentially. And so I, I'm, I'm just really hesitant about sending a message of, of saying positive. It's, it's kind, I feel like it's kind of come back to us. I, you know, I've seen comments saying, well, if you're positive all the time, why are you doing cuts? So again, I, I want to make sure that our message actually reflects our situation. And so I get that LACO's like all on board with us declaring positive, and if we add that fire money in. But right now, it looks like we're using the fire money to keep the lights on and, and using it all up, and it, and then it'll be gone. I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, but on paper, that's what we're showing. So I would, I would offer an amendment to change this to qualified. I don't know if it'll get a second, though.
Are you making a motion for an amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote? Oh, did you want more, sorry. Can you explain the rationale and what amendments or modifications to the document that has been prepared are going to be made in order to reflect a qualified certification? Because based on what the document is, that is, the way it's been prepared right now, it may or may not meet the, the benchmark or the criteria for qualified.
I'm not an expert. What did Pat always say? I'm not a lawyer, I just play one on TV. So to, I think to what Michelle said about putting that fire money, even if it wasn't put into a separate fund, because it might not all be for facilities, because we know it's coming to us as a, you know, prepayment reimbursement, maybe it should be committed in the ending balance, which would make that third year out. We wouldn't be able to meet our reserves, because it would be committed to something else. Now, I'm not, I'm not sure that you actually have to show that, because I think if you explain to anyone where our money is and what's, what that is, and Saman showed it, I mean, we have a deficit there, this cash, if you will, is disguising it. And so in real life, it is a qualified situation, but that would be a way to do it.
But I think what I'm trying to get at is, based on the report that was prepared by staff, based on the document that we are being asked to approve, your amendment is asking us to approve something different. And what is the difference that we are directing staff to make in the report before it goes to LACO? That is my question.
Dr. Blanco.
Yeah, I seriously object to us doing the CBO's job for him. That is really like crossing the line of what the role of the board is, in my opinion. We have spent a lot, you know, a lot of time this evening in our retreat discussing the role of the board and the role of the superintendent, and our direction to staff is to do their, their job right. And so I, I don't understand this thinking that we should file our certification something different than what our financial documents are showing.
Ms. Kenny?
So the fiscal oversight is the job of the board, and, and the district certification of the interim report is something that's signed by the board president. So this is our, this is our job. He, he has presented the information to us, and, and he has put up there the fact that we would not even make our reserves in that third year, except for this extra cash. So, I mean, he's, he's presented the case, and I under, so that's what I'm saying. This is not overstepping, this is not doing his job, this is doing our job. We are the first line of oversight, and then LACO is the second.
Ms. Dr. Blanco.
Why didn't you take this position with the COVID money, then?
That is a good point. All right, no, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Okay, all right, no side talk here, there's no side talk. Dr. Bailey, Ms. Bailey.
So, thank you, I'll take that. I know. So here's where I have a problem. I have a problem that Saman has brought this presentation forward. He's been totally transparent with what's happening with the funding. He has the approval of LACO to move forward in this direction. And so, excuse me, I'm not questioning the validity on how we're filing. I'm not even questioning whether or not we should change how we're filing, because I don't, I agree with Patrice's position. You know, what, what are the merits, you know, to us changing how this report is going to be presented to substantiate a qualified filing? As opposed to what has been filed based on what has been presented that LACO obviously has already been made privy to and has given their okay. So I think that maybe this conversation that we're having, Board Member Kenny, where you talked about future fiscal stabilization plans that you'd like to see, maybe we can start from that point. But I would suggest moving forward tonight with what we have here, and to not belabor this, because I believe that it's the right thing to do. If not, I, I don't think that LACO would have said it's okay to move forward. I think they would have advised staff to go back to the table and bring them something different. And I do take my job seriously when, you know, it comes to my fiduciary role, oversight role as a school board member. But like you said, Board Member Kenny, we are not the experts, we don't do this job. And so it, again, if we, as board members, are going to make a request of staff to bring us something differently than what they've already recommended or brought forward to us, we need to be able to articulate exactly what that is. And if we can't articulate what it is, then it's not fair, in my opinion, for us to hold it up from moving forward. And, and that's my position, thank you.
Dr. Velazquez.
I think that it is very complicated, because it's a dole, it's a sword. We, we're not able to participate in certain process of decision-making, and now we're, we are in a position where we have, have to accept it, right? And so the question is, yes, I would like to act differently, but we don't have that proposal. And what would it take to make that proposal? So is take the time machine? So at this point, and I think that we've talked about it many, many times, I think that we need to have a serious discussion about how we're going to move in the future and stick to it. Because I don't, I, I think that we're in an impasse, where we are going to have to make some critical decisions moving forward. However, here's my concern, Ms. Kenny, and maybe you can clarify, because I am too concerned about what you're bringing up. And in my previous intervention, I did notice that, that extreme difficulty or the difficult position that we're going to be next year, right? But on the other hand, I'm trying to balance it, because if we don't do, if we don't move forward as is, then it is my impression that in order to move forward in a positive way, we would have to even increase the number of cuts, no? And increasing the number of cuts at this point would mean even more, the potential of more displaced people out of work. So I, I, I'm not sure how to move forward while also being conscious of the situation that we're living.
Ms. Kenny?
So unless we do use insurance money to pay ongoing teacher salaries and keep the lights on, we will have, we'll have to make cuts, whether we file positive or qualified. So I'll just read, positive says, "We will meet the financial obligations for the current fiscal year and the subsequent two fiscal years." Qualified says, "The district may not meet the financial obligations for the current fiscal year or two subsequent fiscal years." So it's saying, we have a little uncertainty. That third year looks a little funky right now, and yes, we have this cash that's kind of disguising it. I'm just saying, I think it's a more honest appraisal of where we are, and it communicates to ourselves, to the public, you know, we got some work to do, this is not all, it's not all great. So that's why I'm, I, I, I've been worried, because I think people were very surprised that we had so many cuts to make. But we've kind of known, we've been talking about it since last spring, but I don't know that that's really become a knowledge for anyone, do you see what I mean?
Just hold on, we, we, we want to kind of wrap this up. You can say one more thing, I'm going to say something, and then Scott Harden. And then, or Ms. Bailey before Scott, before me.
I'm just confused, because this seems as like a preventative measure to avoid confusion. But we've been talking about the implications of this budget and the cuts that we had to make this year in April of 2024, in May of 2024, in August, in September. All last year, we knew that this was going to happen, and that we were going to have to make layoffs. And And January was awful, but we knew. And so I, I'm not sure what is the difference in classification. What is the problem it solves? Because we also know that next year, we're going to be in a difficult position. In fact, what, the only thing that we don't know is the extent of the difficult position that we are going to be. So I'm not sure how the amendment enhances clarity because we have been constant and transparent in explaining. I don't want to use that phrase. I guess another idiom for we're in crisis. Okay. There's urgency. Yeah. They didn't want, you know, the roof is on fire, but then it seems insensitive.
All right. So Mr. Harden, then Ms. Bailey.
Yeah, I think where I get on board with this is not, you know, accusing lack of transparency, but I think that the, the may not meet is relevant. I think, and the, the qualified rating means that we have to have a fiscal stabilization plan. And I think that was prudent for us to do, the process that we followed to get there. The work that we did with the superintendent's budget advisory committee was a start in the right direction in, in that process. So I think that's where I support that in that the efforts that we would, it mandates that we have to continue doing those things to address some of the uncertainties that we know that we've identified that, that are before us. So it doesn't say that we won't meet the reserve requirements. It says that we may not. And to me, that seems that there is a risk. I mean, there's a risk that we, there's a lot of moving parts to this, so.
I'm going to ask us all just to be a little brief.
And I think the chances that we may are just the same. So you're just looking at the glass half empty. But the parcel tax also kicks in next year. Is that correct? And that's already included in the numbers? And then there's more insurance money that's going to kick in. My, so here's, here's what makes it hard for me, Kim, with your amendment, is that it's almost as if you're asking us to not see the funding that is there. And the funding is here and it has to be placed somewhere. So I can understand how it contributes to the existing fund balance, right? And so I, I can't support the amendment because it just, it doesn't make sense to me. It's almost, it's almost like saying, you know, we should just ignore the funding that we have and keep this, you know, this information going out there that we don't have the funds when we really do. And he already explained that some of those funds are going to be used for not just fire-related issues with our facilities, but with other things, purchases and, and teacher coverages or whatever that needs to happen that is related to the fires. So, I mean, it's, it's in there. It's going to be used. And I, I, I have a hard time trying to separate that out now that it's there. So that's where I am.
Dr. Blanco.
So there's also some timelines that we're required to meet in regards to turning this information in to Laco. And you're asking us to do work with too many unknowns in a way that's too rapid fire. You know, we could easily create a fiscal stabilization plan with, that includes things that may or may not happen just for the sake of going through an exercise. And I think we were forced to do that in some ways before. We can say we're going to cut, you know, $12 million out of categorical funding or the special ed budget. But I don't understand the reason that you would want staff to go through that unnecessarily when we don't know what the future holds. And there is potential that we will have to cut less than what is being shown this evening because we will get additional resources from the lawsuit that you just approved, from the governor's trailer bill and maybe many other places.
I'd like to add something here. I know how serious this whole situation is and I know the absolute horrendousness that we have all gone through and other people have gone through far worse. However, Laco does have that power to put us into receivership. And they're looking at this man's work and our approval. And they say we're good to go right now. To overstep that into the area of the staff that has worked with Laco makes me feel really uneasy. I would stay with this track and work towards where we need to go. And just what Dr. Blanco said, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. And there may be more money for us. But to reject a positive certification that Laco, who has the power to put us into receivership and say, you know what, we don't believe you, but we're going to do this. I don't know if that sends the right message. And I do feel that this amendment is overstepping the bounds of a trustee to staff in a time when there's so much pain and uncertainty economically and emotionally in people's lives. I don't believe this is the way to go. Thank you. Mr. Harden.
Very quickly, if, if, so if it was qualified, the fiscal stabilization plan that we would have to submit, does that have to be submitted with this certification and what we have?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, we'd have to talk to Laco. Unclear.
In June? Okay.
It's almost certainly in June.
I'd like to call for the question, please. We're going to call for the vote right now. There's a motion in a second on the amendment. We're calling, okay. Roll call? We don't, oh, we're just going to call all in favor on the amendment. All opposed. Now we go to the motion.
I would like a chance for advocacy on the original motion.
Okay, sure.
I just want to make acknowledgement of, I don't think what's, I want to make sure what's not lost here is the, the emotional impact of this layoff and the severity of it. That while, you know, public education is grossly underfunded, California is ranked 33rd in per pupil funding. And we have just came, come off the, the fires. But the repeated layoffs and the severity, I want to emphasize the severity, the depths of the layoffs, it has a human toll. And I, I have talked to staff about this. I know they, I think they understand. But I hope that we can somehow learn, you know, it's, staff can't control the, you know, the stock market or whatever that helps with our revenue. And, but we, we can do something proactive. And I hope that we take this a moment to really look at our process and hopefully not have the severity of these cuts in the future. My understanding is not all districts have this kind of cycle, so.
Ms. Fredericks, you're going to need to wrap it up and then we're going to move on.
So I just want to acknowledge that this does affect our retention and recruitment. And I hope we take this as a opportunity to improve, continuously improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks.
I'll, I'll be brief, but I do want to acknowledge that, Ms. Fredericks is just in fact correct. We have had a tremendous harm to our community. And again, like I said last couple of weeks ago, nobody runs for office to make these kinds of decisions. This is a necessary decision that is not pleasant and not easy for any of us. We may have differing opinions on the path forward, but no one is taking pleasure in having to make any cuts at all. But despite the fact that Pasadena is in a unique situation financially and even more so having this be significantly more impactful due to the fire, there are a number of districts across the state who are faced with having to make the same terrible choices about how to manage their budgets for the next three years. Santa Ana, Coachella Valley, Poway down in San Diego, Rialto, just to name a few, are all facing having to make significant layoffs to their staffs. So we are not alone in having to make this difficult decision. There's probably 30 or so districts that have to file qualified budgets for way significant more financial challenges than we have. There's also probably six districts or so that are really on the bubble of going into receivership. We are fortunate to not be in that situation, in that scenario. But across the state of California right now, school districts are really, really struggling. So this is a shared pain that is occurring in many of the thousand or so school boards across the state. So I think that we all take this responsibility very seriously. And we all are very trepidatious about having to be courageous leaders in making this very difficult decision. So know that the work that staff has done to bring forward a recommendation that meets the needs of our financial obligations, but also manages and balances to the best of their ability, the human impact of these decisions is very real. I know that over the course of the several months that the superintendent's budget advisory committee has met, these have been very difficult conversations and very difficult decisions about sort of, what is something that can be eliminated right now? And what is something that we absolutely must keep? And none of those trade-offs have been easy at all. So I just want to thank the staff for their thoughtfulness, their diligence and their ability to bring forward a work product that represents the best of what is an unthinkable situation. So that, with that, I'm going to support the recommendation of staff and hope that we can be thoughtful about in the future where we go, how do we make decisions for our continued financial wellbeing and continue to, to center and prioritize how we continue to serve the students of Pasadena Unified.
Thank you. And we all received the Kevin Gordon communiqué that said the majority of school districts in the state are undergoing what we're undergoing. We are not unique in this. We are in a shared community. And right now, because of this incredible stewardship, we have a positive certification that's going to help us. Willingly going qualified is not going to help us. So I am advocating for the original. And Dr. Velazquez.
I want to talk, I want to say that I am concerned about the trend and the implications of the trend moving into the future. But at this point, I am going to have to support this budget as proposed, understanding the difficult consequences moving forward. If, if anybody in the community feels that they're having very restful nights, I encourage them to run for office.
Okay. Are we wrapped up here on advocacy? Can we have a vote? Thank you very much. Mr. Bravo Creamy, you might as well just stand there. Aren't you up next? Okay.
No present.
It's under action items. Approval?
Move approval of H2.
Thank you very much, Kim Kenny. I could have read that. And let me do it. Approval of amendment number one to law firms for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Sorry, I was making a motion.
Second.
So I want us to talk until nine?
I know. Look at you.
Oh, wait, I'm the closest, huh?
All right. So we're, we need to approve this.
I didn't go over.
We're still approving. We have a motion in a second. Hello? Hello? We're still working here. Approval, motion in a second. Oh, where'd she go? Yeah.
Can we vote, please?
I guess we can go ahead and call for it. All in favor? You should be paying attention.
Absent.
Ready to adjourn. There's nothing else. 9:25.